SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot stream text dot net forward slash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendees opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelist and enable the attendees video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please enter this number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes, el instituto escolar unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave, seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you. 如果别人需要我们的服务，麻烦你致电去Google Meet那个音频号码。多谢。Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes translation services.
Good evening, everyone. I now reconvene this regular meeting at 6:34 PM. Just a reminder about childcare. Childcare is provided from 6 to 9 PM for children ages three to 10 right across the hall in the Educational Placement Center. Also, public comment will occur under Section D, Public Comment, which is right after these opening items. So all the public comment on agenda items and non-agenda items will be heard at that point. If you'd like to make public comment and have not already done so, please submit a card to Mr. Steele over here. And if you are a student, please make sure you write student on the card so we can make, let you go first. We typically allow about an hour, a little bit more of a public comment in order to start our business by 8:00 PM. And we also make every effort to allow both in-person and online public comment, which we will do tonight as well. Now I'm going to begin with our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tesh Alone, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tesh Alone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territories. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tish community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Now I will move to Item C1, which is Votes on Student Expulsion Matters. Sorry, sir. Okay. The first one is I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one middle school student, matter number 2024, 2025, number eight, for one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion commencing the day immediately following the expulsion order. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weisberg Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes. Thank you.
I now move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one middle school student, matter number 2024, 2025, number nine, for the remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester through June 4th, 2025. During the suspended expulsion period, student will return to Denman Middle School. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weisberg Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024, 25, number 10, for one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion commencing the day immediately following expulsion order. Student will be placed at Civic Center Secondary School during the expulsion enforcement period. Suspended expulsion status for the spring 2025 semester contingent on the student's completion of Item 10F in the rehabilitation plan. During the suspended expulsion period, student will be placed at a comprehensive high school or an alternative school credit recovery program to enable them to graduate within two years. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weisberg Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Here's the remainder of the readout from closed session. In the matter of student BK versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024060072, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student SBC versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024089, sorry, 2024080913, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In one matter of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives direction to the general counsel. And on one matter of public employee dismissal, discipline, release, the board by a vote of seven eyes approved a retirement agreement. All right, now we will move to Item D, which is public comment. So I think we're ready to begin. Mr. Steele?
I'm going to call five people at a time. So if you hear your name, please come line up. We'll start with students. I only have one card that indicated that they were a student, but if others, other students gave me a card and didn't say you were a student, you can come on up at this time. So the card I do have is Leah Grace Tan. You can come on up. And if there are any other students, please come right now.
Hi, my name is Leah Grace Tan. I am a third grader and Spring Valley is my home. Please don't close my school. We are worth keeping. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Are there any other students? All right, we'll be moving on to the next five names. I have Loose H. Oh, sorry. Okay, come on up.
My name is Rebecca. I come from Spring Valley. Please don't close my school. I, I start Spring Valley and kindergarten. I have so many friends.
Any others? Can I move on? All right, come on up.
Um. I hope they don't close Spring Valley because it's probably one of the best schools. And it was the first one, like the oldest, and it's and it's really cool. And I don't want you guys to like close Spring Valley.
All right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Angelica and I am pleading you to not close Spring Valley because it was the first public school and I've been there since kindergarten.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, so Loose H, Leah Grace Tan, oh, I already called that, sorry. Kazani Finau, Violet Vasquez, and Juana Taylor. So please come line up and we have one minute each. Go ahead. Press the button.
My name is Natacha. My name is Loose Lanka. My name is from San Francisco. I urge this board to vote no or maintain the rule as I support the independent. Why do you have to go to the extreme lengths of voting for credentials so that you can appoint her when you already have credential staff here at 555, the district temporarily hired from the credentials existing staff while you launch a search for a new superintendent with meaningful
Most translation? Okay, so.
Temporarily hired from within the credential existing staff while you launch for a search for a new superintendent with meaningful community input.
Thank you.
And with five elements and advocate for San Francisco. Is that good? All right, cool. Staff and those in Southeast.
I'm sorry, this is, this is, this is interpreter. I think you need to pull yourself a little away from the microphone because when you put yourself too close, I'm unable to interpret what you're saying. I'm very sorry if you can repeat it what you said. Thank you. Appreciate it. This is great. Thank you so much.
All right, can y'all run my one minute back? I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. All right, cool. My name is Kazani Finau and organizer with Five Elements and an advocate for the young people here in San Francisco. I was born in SF and raised in the southeast part of SF Bay, U-Hamers Point. I am a third generation alumni of Malcolm X Academy Elementary School. I'm here to push you all to reevaluate the approach you all are pursuing to permanently close our schools down, whether it's a couple of weeks from now or a year from now. The livelihood of our families will be tremendously impacted by the closure of schools. Our families would have public transportation interruptions, figuring out school bus budgets, young people forced to rebuild trust at a new school, increasing youth social anxiety, and adding new challenges embarrassed for youth and their families. I'd like to remind you that you all once used to be a youth. We cannot let San Francisco a no children, a no children city home. It is your responsibility as an adult ally, parent, aunt, uncle, sister, brother, and an advocate to make sure our youth and families self-determination and community needs are made, especially in education. I leave you with this African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child, and you are part of that village. Again, the young people say it. It is your responsibility. They are prioritized.
My name is Violeta Vasquez and I am an SFUSD alum. I dropped out of my junior year at Baboa High School. I'm co-founder of Five Elements Youth Collective, and I'm here to reiterate that although the conversations on school closures have been paused, there is by no means a victory for our community, as it was when you all refused to acknowledge Eid for our Muslim relatives instead of hiding in the calendar to disguise the shame of being neutral to a genocide, only to learn that you've also rescinded that vote. There is no victory with the board that is willingly, is willing to offer nearly a third of a million dollars to someone who is in support of further marginalizing and discriminating against youth and families in the southeast side of San Francisco, and you can rescind that vote. Closing the schools is never the answer, and it will never be a solution when there is a just and authentic community process. I urge you all to do better and actively engage in the people you represent because in my lifetime, I have yet to lay witness to the school district prioritizing the health, safety, and wellness of the children it educates. And thank you to Mr. Bogus for being the only vote to be against the severance package. Matt Wayne should have been fired.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Juana with Five Elements. If I knew now what I knew last Friday at the special meeting, I would have firmly spoken against the resignation details and severance package for Matt Wayne that was passed six to one. If we claim our district is in debt, how do we justify giving Wayne a 500,000 plus send-off that includes fringe benefits for his ineffective leadership, even if it gave families a temporary relief to pause the closure process? Vital resources could have gone towards a salary for a teacher, a paraprofessional, or like the social worker that got cut at Bessie Carmichael that I just learned about outside. Any other student priority? Wayne fueled and further caused chaos and misinformation for students and families across the district, and he should have been fired, not allowed to resign. All eyes are on this board because the next, beyond the next election cycle, because we will not allow politics to be played with our children's futures. Never again will we accept closing schools as a solution to budget mismanagement or mediocrity instead of accountability or neglect the voices of students who plead for equality education. We will return as many times as we need to to protect our public education.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm calling the next group. Okay, great. Next, next five I'm calling up, please line up. You can't speak right now. You can't speak right now. Not right now. No, thank you. Reyna Taylor, Supriya Ray, Reverend Davis Brown, Brandy Markman, and Vanessa Marero.
I just want to make sure before I restart my time that I'm okay with the distance of the mic.
I think it sounds good.
All right. Hi, greetings. Reyna Taylor here with Five Elements, the Rep Coalition, and I'm here to remind you that we need to restart the RAI process, asking the correct questions. How do we build schools that attract and retain families? Go to each site. Get to know what they look like beyond the paper. Get to know the programs on and off Matt Wayne's list to make sure that you are looking at what the school actually contributes to this district. You know, we need to get ready for 2026, 2027, and we need to make sure we don't make the same mistakes. Thank you, Commissioner Bogus, for your dissenting vote. Matt Wayne should never have been allowed to do this. $538,000 in wages and benefits and fringe, over half a million dollars went to this man who didn't bring any solutions. That should not have happened, and that cannot happen. To the entire board, please, all eyes on Maria Sue, speak up for our children. That's your job, to speak up for our children. Education over politics.
Thank you.
My name is Supriya Ray. I'm coming in tonight to speak about a couple of things. First, the subjection of the families and staff in our school district to this constant roller coaster of chaos and dysfunction is really discouraging and disheartening to folks. It seems like we're going back to the drama of the pandemic years. So I would hope that we would switch from that course and return to more stability. I also hope that there will be an appropriate process in the search for a new superintendent. I appreciate that there is an effort to find, you know, to appoint Maria Sue and Carleen Aguilera Fort so that we have leadership in the district, but we should be engaging in an appropriate process to find a new superintendent. Second thing I wanted to comment on is that two items disappeared from the draft agenda. First, the progress monitoring report on third grade literacy and the board's self-evaluation. Where did these items go? Why are we not talking about them? We're supposed to be spending 50% of time on student outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the chairman of the board. My name is Brown. And I'm president of the San Francisco branch of the National Association for the Advancement of the Conde People. And now for 48 years, I've been coming before this board. And I'm here tonight to ask of you to appoint Ms. Maria Sue as interim superintendent. And I think we should appoint also the mayor for creating this interim, interim means to keep the school district solvent. Finally, I want to appeal to all the parents here to get busy, to make sure that a certain person does not get in at fighting house. It's about 2025. It's about destroying the Department of Education in the United States of America. You cannot make it with an untrained, unemployed citizenry. Thank you for what you've done thus far, and I know it is an interim move, and I say to everybody, chill. It is not permanent. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm a San Francisco public school parent, and with the San Francisco Education Alliance, we are part of the Equity for Else campaign. I am mortified at the idea of the board hiring Maria Sue, the former head of the Department of Children, Families, and Youth, who defunded community-based organization and gave taxpayer money to the San Francisco Parent Coalition, a sham astroturf group funded by two billionaires who have been working with Mayor Breed for over a year, saying we need to close schools. Maria Sue doesn't even have a teaching credential. This hire would be the epitome of cronyism and the corruption that is choking our city and our school district. And you're going to rubber stamp this? Maria Sue has says that she wants to continue the school procedure process. So why are you hailing her? These schools are our schools. You don't love our children more than we do. We know what's best for our kids. Please vote no on E1, E2, and E3. Do not appoint her to this board. We need a community process to select a superintendent.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty, good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you to Dr. Carolyn Foraguelada for your leadership. I want to share with you a press release. I think all of you have probably read by now, and it's about how to hire a superintendent. It's really important that we have superintendents that have the appropriate credentials to lead this school district. This is a school district that is impacted by disproportionality, and we need someone that's going to be able to turn it around. Someone that has an administrative credential, someone that has experience in kindergarten, the 12th grade, someone that has experience with educational initiatives, someone that has shown and proven their engagement with the community versus their defunding of community. It's really imperative that this is an individual, work with the community and parents. We, as a parent, have a voice in the process. We, as students, have a voice in the process, and we, as community members, have a voice in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the next five. Please come line up. Dan. Dan from Spring Valley. Lisa Mendoza. Katrina Tan. Maya K. And Teresa Dulalas. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing.
About here is.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So members of the board, I, my name is Stan Lee. I am a proud Spring Valley alum. I was still in the, there in the 80s, and decades later, after my wife and I became parents, we decided to send our son to Spring Valley. Not only for the rich cultural diversity at the school, but also rich in economic diversity. So you know, as a, as a child growing up, I remembered any external stressors that, you know, that came onto my family. I remembered arguments my, my parents would have. So the families in Spring Valley, you know, haven't changed much, right? Any external stressors puts a lot of pressure on them, and they're some of the most vulnerable. So I, I humbly ask you that, you know, if, if I knew that somebody was fighting for, on my behalf, for my family's behalf, things would have been just a little bit easier. So on, on, on the behalf of all the communities in Spring Valley families, I ask that you fight for them because you're already doing everything possible to put food on the table, to make sure they're the clothes. So please, I humbly ask you, please save our school.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Is this okay? Great. I'm Katrina Tan. My, my child is Leah Grace, who just spoke. We, she attends Spring Valley Science Elementary. My husband is an alumni. In less than two weeks, we gathered numerous signed petitions from individuals and local businesses concerned about the closure. Our concerns go beyond losing in a store school. The new site is too far for most families to walk, increasing transportation costs and time. The after-school program costs $500 more per month, while 50% of our kids are qualifying for free lunch, and there's no support for students in the Cantonese program. The merger also failed to consider retaining our current staff, who had tremendously helped with our kids' transition. I volunteered for many events, including teaching motor skills. This is my time, my contribution. When we close our school based solely on the budget, we close opportunities that go far beyond numbers. We take away from the community that works hard and fights for our kids. All we ask is for you to want the same. We can all agree on one thing. No one wants a state takeover. We need to work together to find a solution. Right now, the ends do not justify the means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Sue Mendoza, and I am a Spring Valley parent as well. I know the school, the school closure process has, the, the school closure has been temporarily paused, but we know that school closures are not off the table. As Mayor Breed said yesterday, the district may still need to look at closing schools. So here I am to talk to you at Spring Valley. Number one, Spring Valley is the oldest California elementary school in operation. It was one of the seven original schools opened during the gold rush. It is the only one that is still open. It is as old as California. Number two, it is the site of our battle against discrimination. It is the predecessor of Brown versus Board of Education. I'm not going to go in length about Mamie Tate versus Hurley. It's a, it's a case that you can look up and read about it just because of time constraint, but it is, it made the same argument that the Brown versus Board of Education made, as you know, the landmark case that ended school segregation. Number three is, Spring Valley is a great neighborhood. We offer English, Spanish, and Cantonese programs, two special day classes, and a TK class. It's a safe place for learning.
Sorry, that's your time. Thank you.
And I'll just wrap it up. As you begin the new process of balancing budgets, I just ask that you hear and see us and learn about us. Thank you.
I'm, I'm off agenda. I'm, I'm not on the agenda. You called my name, but I, but I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're about, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not agenda. I didn't. I didn't know to switch, but we are not agenda now. Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You can go ahead.
Okay, I can go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. So this is my special education with, with regards to the presentation given at the supervisor's special education hearing. SPED did not overbudget by 60 million from the previous year. SPED submitted a budget within their allocation and according to timelines to review student enrollment data and IEP information. It's very important that the superintendent listen to their SPED executive team and CAC. The SPED team and community worked hard to plan for the year ahead and follow state SOPA guidelines, watched last May's SOPA hearing. The district closed positions and then did not fund them when reinstated, all of this without the head of SPED being consulted or in the room. The former superintendent admitted he let business services make an educational decision. He implied SPED is overspending when they're not. They're fulfilling federal law. It's unacceptable to blame the SPED department for this current debacle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Dulalas. I'm actually from Sam Can, and I'm also a former parent of the Bessie Carmichael Filipino Education Center K-28 school. I'm here to talk about our social workers. We were told that we had an intact, you know, two of our social workers will be there, and then it was taken back. So why? So we want to, we, we, we did, you know, send a petition October 11. They said that, you know, they, they're actually reassigning, you know, one of our social workers to another school. But then, you know, there was a hiring freeze, but then why? But then why take our social worker? We are a two-campus school. The other campus is three blocks away from us. We are a high-needs and trauma-experienced school, especially with, with suicide ideation. What happens if something happens, you know, to our children? Potentially, what we will do is to sue you, the school, right? So now that we're now, we're not here to play games because we're here to actually tell you that, you know, we're not into politics. Our children are not games for politics.
Thank you, that's your time.
It's not game for.
I'm sorry, but that's your time.
Let me please finish just for a few seconds. Thank you. And then please listen. Our school, our, our, our children are people. They're not animals.
All right.
Sorry, everybody. I just asked Mr. Steele to please cut off the speakers if you go more than just a couple seconds over because it really is not fair to others if we don't keep the time the same. So I apologize. I understand it's difficult to make your comments within a minute, but please respect. We're just trying to, trying to follow the law and be fair to everybody. So when you hear the timer go off, you got a couple of seconds to finish, and then he's going to cut off the mic. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Calling the next group, Stephanie, I can't read the last name, starts with an F, sorry, from Yickwo. All right. Kristi Sampson, Rex Ridgway, Laura Kennedy. And Donisia Carlos. You can go ahead. Oh, just button, when the button on the base of the.
Oh, the button. Gotcha. Hi, my name is Stephanie Falkenstein, and I'm a parent at Yickwo Elementary School. As many of you know, the last two weeks have been a veritable roller coaster of emotions. It's hard to believe that it was only last Tuesday that we started these discussions. To make matters worse, Yickwo has been denied the ability to speak out on behalf of our community at a meeting with the school district, just like our neighbor, Spring Valley. We ask that SFUSD do a better job of engaging the community with critical decisions going forward. We are more than numbers on a spreadsheet. A haphazard closure approach would have turned Nob Hill, Russian Hill, and North Beach into a school desert that would change the face of D3 and the surrounding community for generations to come. We ask that the Board of Ed and the SFUSD approach the upcoming staffing cuts in a way that takes into account the diverse staffing needs of each school, including our mod severe SDC program, the number one most requested program in the district and is fully sta, is fully filled with students but not staff. As, heck, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristi Sampson, parent of two girls at Yickwo. I want to just highlight the importance of walkability, especially for schools like Yickwo. Walkable schools promote accessibility, safety, and better attendance. SFUSD is already facing a chronic absenteeism issue. And moving schools like Yickwo out of D3 to unwalkable locations will likely make this problem worse. Our kids belong in District Three, where they can easily access their school and be part of their community. Let's keep our schools close and help solve, not worsen, the absenteeism challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rex Ridgway, and I'm glad to see Willie Brown, I'm sorry, Malcolm X and Spring Valley here. I'm here for the fact that the student success funds that were approved this coming year, $25 million of student success funds would be made available. And I've got the list of those schools that got money last time. Malcolm X and Spring Valley did not apply, and they could have gotten up to $350,000 of either readiness grants or implementation grants. Now, what we need to do as a parent is on the school site council. It is by California law that every school has to have a school site council, not a PTA. And I'm not finished yet on PTA. I'm talking about a school site council because that's where the money is. That's where you vote to say, no, you're not going to spend it on this, you're going to spend it on this. We parent here to be on the school site council. I'm on leaking school site council. We got $350,000 of readiness grant last year. So I've got the list. You guys are not on it.
Thank you, Rex.
You need to get on it. Thank you. Appreciate it. School site council, you are.
Whenever you're ready, yeah.
Hello, my name is Laura Kennedy, and I am a parent of Yickwo to a kindergartner. I was shocked to see Yickwo on the list because for our school, our kindergartner waitlist was full. When I looked at the data to the 11 impacted schools that were to be shut down, Yickwo was the number one choice on that entire list for incoming kinders. District-wide, for our special day classes, for students with extensive mod to severe autism, number one choice for incoming kinder families district-wide. How is it obvious to me, a new parent, to see these numbers and not to the process that impacted schools? I ask that you please take into consideration where demand is for families for incoming kinders, where people are making investments for the next six years of their child's education, and also think of the ground game. The last thing I'll say is with respect to our special day classes, when I have heard about some of the schools that we're looking to send our students to, my understanding is we don't even have enough bathrooms for special day classes, kinders, and TKs. This is something that needs to be factored in.
Good evening. My name is Donisia Carlos. I'm a community member of San Francisco. And I want to let the school board know that the hiring of Josephine Zhao as the Black Parent Liaison for James Look Middle School is yet another slap in the face to the black community of San Francisco. It also demonstrates the continued ethnic cleansing of the black population taking place in San Francisco. This hiring absolutely did not take into consideration the students you claim to center in your core values. This is a disrespectful and blatant act of anti-blackness. And my question to you is, was anti-blackness the goal you were trying to reach all along?
Thank you. I'm calling the final group up. Please line up and hear your name. Chanel Blackwell. Min Chang. Eric Morle. Rianda Batiste. Amos Brown. And Virginia Marshall.
Hi, I'm Chanel. Blackwell, parent of two boys, one a freshman in college and another an eighth grader. I have concerns about the current San Francisco Unified School District budget needed to keep afloat and prevent state takeover. How can I trust the board? With all these uncertainties about our public school happening in the last couple of weeks, we all know what's going on. And, and to trust the new superintendent, I heard good news about, but still, I just need to know, how could she work for the city and take a superintendent simultaneously on the job? And I found out about the tax paying, is paying for Dr. Wayne, his to 2026. And then we got Dr. Maria Sue, we pay for her, a taxpayer money, but adds up, some of that can go to some of our kids. But while really I'm concerned, I was upset about the IEP, the money that is missing or lost and that could, but, and I just want to trust the school district. That's all I want to do. I want to trust the school district. And I'm having problems.
Thank you.
My name is Min Chang, a proud San Franciscan and a mother of two daughters. I've been attending these board meetings since April and have also spent a lot of time with our schools, families, and educators, listening to their concerns and solutioning with them. And especially in the past two weeks, I've had the privilege to be with Sutro, Yigoo, Jean Parker, and all the schools in our district in terms of school closures. It's good that SFUSD has decided finally to pause the school closures. However, this is only temporary, as the mayor said yesterday at the press conference. I ask that the new superintendent and the board commit to not closing schools. Closing schools is not the answer. We need to do the hard work of raising revenues, cutting costs at the central office, and making public schools competitive in terms of growing enrollment. We need to elect new board members that bring the financial management, the leadership, and the real ideas in terms of solving this fiscal crisis. And we need to really work with the community in solutioning. We also need to laser focus on these issues and stop the last-minute political maneuvers. Thank you.
Thank you. Press it again. There you go.
Hello, my name is Eric Morle, and I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Elena, who's a kindergartner at Yickwo. We, like others, walk to school. And I just wanted to bring to the board's attention the fact that District Three is made up of four of California's six densest zip codes. It's San Francisco's four densest zip codes. And I think that the long-term impact of school closures in some of these very dense places is going to have an outsized impact on the urban planning of San Francisco as well as the local communities. So if we want to keep California on track for our goals to have walkable neighborhoods, we really need to be encouraging young families to come and occupy these neighborhoods rather than closing the schools there. We also, in these four zip codes, have some of the lowest car ownership. So if the solution to closing schools is that we have to leave with car or public transport, bear in mind the hills and think about trying to really keep people close to the communities where they're living.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, board commissioners. I am Rianda Batiste, and I am a proud APEC parent leader. Tonight, I'm here as a black mom, and I wanted to express how disappointed I am to learn that Josephine Zhao was hired as a black family liaison at James Look High School. This individual previously relinquished her run for school board associated with her racist and bigoted beliefs. Hiring this individual to act as a liaison for black students and families is a complete slap in the face and once again highlights the anti-black racism that exists in this district. SFUSD, please step up for black students and families. We represent a small number, but I guarantee you that we are small but mighty. If you truly care about black students and family engagement, then you need to hire someone that believes in the brilliance of black students and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Marshall, retired educator. I am sad to stand here tonight. Number one, Matt Wayne, you know, who received one brown penny. He should have been fired. He brought our school, school district to disaster. Thank you, Commissioner Bogus, for standing up for our children. Number two, the person whose superintendent should have an educational credential. Ms. Ma, Ms. Zhao, you do not, you should not be sitting in that position. We need to ask the community, ask the educators. I have two names right now who can work with Superintendent Double Superintendent Echoloff Ford, who have great experience here in the San Francisco Unified School District. Ask us. Number three, immediately, please, Mr. Alexander, get rid of Josephine Zhao. A few years ago, she came to this board. She protested Arlie. She protested APEC. Now you've southern our ancestors, she's in that position. Please tomorrow morning, transfer her to another position. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Amen. All right, that completes in-person public comment.
We will now move on to public comment for our virtual participants. At this time, we will start with students. So we ask, I see a lot of hands going up. If we could allow our students to speak first. So if you're not a student, please put your hand down. Thank you. I see a lot of hands going down. Thank you very much. So I will call Noah Gloria. All right, I'll call Noah. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Each speaker will have one minute, and we're starting with students, and then we will move on.
Buenas noches. Todas, todas las personas que están en línea, solamente los estudiantes. Levanten su mano y todos los estudiantes tienen absolutamente un minuto nada más. Y después del comentario de los estudiantes, el resto puede levantar su mano. Gracias.
Hola, hoy es la hora de presentar opiniones en la red. Si alguien necesita presentar su opinión, usted tiene un minuto para presentar su opinión. Por favor, en la red, dale a la campana. Nosotros nos presentaremos primero los alumnos. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Noah?
Yes, hi. My name is Noah Sloss. I'm a proud parent of an SFUSD student.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Noah. I, this is an opportunity for students to speak.
Oh.
We're going to let students, and then I'll, we'll call on you after, after students.
Sorry.
Thank you. Actually seeing no students, so go ahead, please, Noah. Sorry about that.
Okay, no worries. My name is Noah Sloss. I'm a proud parent of an SFUSD student. I wanted to share some recent history about Maria Sue. As the head of the mayor's Department of Children, Youth, and Their Families, her department denied funding to 14 local organizations in the community outreach category. The only nonprofit awarded was SF Parents, whose director had been featured in photo opportunities and special events with the mayor. When one of the mayor's direct reports is appointed as superintendent two weeks before an election, this creates the appearance of and potential for favoritism, corruption, and political patronage. Now Maria Sue will be in charge of a $1.2 billion budget, awarding tens of millions of dollars to vendors. I'd like to urge the board to reject her appointment. This is a bad idea. Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes, my name is Aaron Horn with Parents for Public Schools. I am horrified by the election by Mayor London Breed of Dr. Sue. I echo what Noah said about her complete lack of experience in public education. And I'm very concerned that the board wants to pass a resolution to allow Mayor London Breed to be the supervisor of the superintendent. There needs to be some checks and balances. Mayor London Breed has only been approving grants and funding to organizations aligned with SF Parent Coalition. As for the school site council comment, yes, school site councils are wonderful, but only if you are connected to SF Parent Coalition funded by billionaires will your grant be approved.
Thank you, Aaron.
The mayor needs to mind.
That's your time. Thank you.
That's a lie. If you are a parent, you can be on the school site council.
Tom?
Hi, yeah, as an educator, I also think we need to be careful of Dr. Carley Frack. When I was in the bargaining, SPED bargaining, there was a comment he made, we're in a crisis right now in SPED, and if we lower the case number of students for SPED teachers, we'll be more in crisis. So what was the answer? Nonimproved working conditions, give everyone $1,000. But SPED teachers, educators, and paraprofessionals needed better working conditions. He barely showed up to the SPED meetings. I'm sorry, but I'm just telling you the truth and my experience. And if you ignore it, then you ignore it. If you don't question him about those comments, that's really sad. If you don't listen to the voices of the parents about closing schools in the future, that's sad. It's not just saying yes, but it's like making, you know, giving us evidence of why this is going to be beneficial. Matt Wayne said closing schools is not going to save money. So why are we doing, why are we possibly going to do it in the future? If it's resource alignment, we need to see the evidence. And we shouldn't have these mistakes that are keep happening with special education. Do not appoint Dr. Carley Frack.
Sophie Rich?
Hi, I've been an SFUSD parent for nearly two decades, and I question what's really going on here with this MOU thrown together in a matter of days at this critical moment, two weeks before an election. Waiving the credential requirements for a superintendent of an entire school district makes no sense. And appointing a certified educator as superintendent is your job. Why are you handing it over to the mayor? This is the same mayor who filed a lawsuit against this district just a few years ago while we were all struggling to navigate a once-in-a-century pandemic. This is the same mayor who just installed a charter school director to this board a few months ago. These are not the actions of someone looking out for everyone served by public schools. These are political stunts. And with all respect to Dr. Sue, I believe that putting her in charge of our district is clearly pandering to the moneyed interests who hold such influence over our mayor, who look at our schools and see real estate profits. Please do not proceed with these actions. Dr. Sue is on record saying that will still lead to school closures. And everybody in the community is united in saying, we do not want our schools closed. We need our small community schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Just a gentle reminder, everyone, when you hear the timer, please wrap up your final thought. Everyone will have one minute to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor. Si escuchan el temporizador, tienen que terminar su comentario. Los comentarios son solamente de un minuto para cada persona. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles?
Yes, thank you. I would like to first welcome the new superintendent and to implore you to give over both hiring and payroll to SF City Hall. You've seen the dysfunction firsthand. And please cut those parts of SFUSD Central Office permanently. Also, be honest as soon as possible about the percentage of classroom teachers that will get pink slips March 15th. I need the district as a taxpayer to promise not to just put the poor fiscal management on us or admit that homeowners' taxes will go up $500 a month. I have been an active participant in the student site council for a decade and this may be my last year. I disagree that it is equitable if my school site gets $5,000 per student while some schools get $25,000. Is it equity to have one-third of the students and a fully funded staff? Sped budget is bloated due to outsourcing. We never built the capacity here. And I will be voting no on A until the district produces actuals on its current projects. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Galen?
Hello, it's Galen. I am a parent of a student at San Francisco Community School. I have been one of these parents who's just been rocked by the last couple of weeks of activity with our school ending up on the list. And I was shocked to learn that, well, not that shocked, but Matt Wayne injected the 260, arbitrary 260 number into the Stanford Magical Math for composite code, composite scores. And that's why all the schools on the list were tiny and that's why it wasn't an equitable snapshot of schools to close. Yeah, you could have done a better job with a DART and you would have had a more equitable outcome, is the quote I've heard. I'm grateful we're having a pause. I am terrified that the mayor has appointed this person and that we are, you know, going into this for, until 2026 with this like sort of hamstrung situation with a deputy. And I really urge you to make it a shorter contract. Can we make it 2025?
Thank you. Thank you. Brad?
Hi, my name is Brad Chapin. I'm on the board of the Harvey Milk Democratic Club. And I'm just speaking as an individual here. I just want to ask the board to please start organizing with us. If, I know I've heard a lot of private conversations among certain board members. And it seems to me that sometimes certain board members think that the public or that parents are not smart enough or we don't really understand the details of what's going on. So I really encourage you to let us know what these details are. I want to know why Wendy Sue, why we can't have a non, a person who doesn't have a history of racism be this temporary superintendent on our schools, for our schools. I want to know why Josephine Zhao, who has a history of transphobic and racist comments, why is she the black liaison for our school district? And how can we work with you to fight so that we have the funding that we need so we don't have to close any schools? How can you help us and be organizers and do the job that you were put in this role to do to protect our students? Thanks.
Jennifer?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, just real quick, I don't think people commenting over Zoom can hear the one-minute buzzer. So you might want to check that. I just hope that this board learned, we aren't going to let you close schools. I think you've been talking to a lot of people who aren't truly part of the community, who manufacture consent. But the reality is, San Francisco is not closing schools. We're not compromising. If you supported it, we're voting you out. If a board is elected that supports closing schools, we're recalling them. Come up with a better solution.
Thank you. Erin?
Hello, I am a parent at Sunnyside Elementary. I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that I've heard tonight regarding Dr. Sue. I urge the board to vote no on E1, E2, and E3. She doesn't have a credential and this is basically a mayoral appointment at this point. And I also would like to urge the board to reconsider the hiring of Josephine Zhao. She's a known racist and a known transphobe. This is shameful and I really think the James Look students are better. Thank you.
Thank you. Will?
Yes, my name is, my name is Will Patterson. And I want to speak to Maria Sue's appointment. I'm actually quite in favor of this appointment because she is a psychologist by education and she has been running adult, the children, youth, and families in a way that supports SFUSD and understands the mental health needs of our students. A large part of the special education budget is subsidized by the work that her department has done to provide resources on school campuses. And without those resources, our students with mental health challenges would be much less served. However, I do want to raise concern about something I read the other day where it said that she didn't see herself as being responsible for curriculum changes. And I hope that that was a misquote because we really do need someone who can lead on curriculum change in the district right now, especially with English language arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I echo the sentiment of, not of the last caller, but of many of the previous callers. James Look children deserve far better. I, the commenter who said that this was a continuing ethnic cleansing with black community is 100% correct. I also beg the board to see the potential in this school district. One of the things that drove me crazy hearing about through all of the DAC meetings and the resource alignment was that we're going to just continue to drop kids. How about we let the greater Bay Area community know that people outside the city can enroll their children in our schools? We don't have people going after people that are outside the address zones anymore, do we? Because we could fill these buildings and we need to fill these buildings. The Yikwo parent that said that we, we were taking schools out of the densest neighborhoods is, are 100% correct. Look at where these closures were lined up to be. Please do something about getting kids back and pumping up our district. Do a better job of this. Stick your necks out. Fix the budget. Please audit the EPC. That really needs some digging into there because that's being mishandled so terribly. I can't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller ending in 671? Caller ending in 671?
I am Tony Hines, a proud African-American Parent Advisory Council parent leader. I am horrified that Josephine Zhao has been hired as a black parent liaison. Ms. Zhao has expressed her lack of empathy for black people. Please make it make sense. And she also has been exposed to be transphobic. Secondly, why did you hire Maria Sue when she is not credentialed? Just last week, you all said she was a free consultant. You keep sending us mixed messages. Please, San Francisco Board of Education, be the leaders for all San Francisco children and families. Stop being so political. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope?
Hi, board members. I come as a former employee of San Francisco USD, San Francisco Unified School District, a black liaison. And I have to say that it's time for you guys to step up. I'm also a parent. And as a parent and working for you over the years, I have endured the trauma because it's more about being anti-black than really supporting the black students. I have endured racism as a black employee. I have experienced it as a parent. And now you guys slap us in the face when there's opportunity now to have black liaisons that you decide to sit there and not do the right thing and put someone that isn't going to serve but has talked about the community. My mother served this district for 30 years and had endured. I thought it would be different coming on this side to impact, but I had to leave because the trauma that I have had to go through as a parent, seeing that you guys are more worried about the political than the actual children, is enough. I'm with everyone else. If you guys don't line up, I'm going to lobby too.
Thank you. That is your time. Thank you, Hope. Leilani?
Hi. I'm just very... The hiring practices, everything that you've experienced in the last year. And then to hire Josephine Zhao as the black family liaison. Who did this? Why and how? In one of her tweets, she tweeted that the black community was not a priority, that our, our, our priorities are not aligned with education. And then you put her in close contact with our black children. This is, this is just... This, this really needs to stop. If you... This is a pattern. This is a pattern of not caring, of not paying attention and that people just come in your face and say a few sweet things or they come to the BOE all the time and you think, well, you know what? They're a good person. It was very clear that she still has a lot of development. And that means you bypass a lot of good people.
That is your time, Leilani. Thank you. And Suzie?
Good evening. I'm a longtime teacher in this district and I feel that San Francisco Unified School District hasn't been taken over by the state, but it 100% has been taken over by the mayor, which I find detrimental to the well-being of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude virtual public comment for agenda and non-agenda items.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who commented today. We will now move on to our action items. Board members, I'd like to propose a revision to the agenda so that we can take the consent calendar, item F, first before the action items. May I have a motion in a second to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we, we need to vote on that? Okay, so to adjust the agenda?
To adjust the agenda, Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wasbey Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Okay, so now we will move to the consent calendar. May I have a motion in a second on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent? No? Great. Roll call on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you. Student Delegate Montgomery on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Thank you. Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wasbey Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. All right, now we will move to the action items in section E. There are four items. The agreement between the City and County of San Francisco and the San Francisco Unified School District for Superintendent Services is number one. The number, number two is the approval of resolution appointing Maria Sue as the superintendent. Number three is the approval of resolution for credential waiver. And number four is the approval of contract of district executive deputy superintendent. May, let's see, do we need to move in second all of them before discussion? Because we were going to discuss them all together.
You can break it up or discuss it all together, whatever.
Okay. So, but should we do a motion first? Okay, so let's, I'll ask for a motion in a second on these items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And so we're going to have discussion, board discussion of all four and then we'll do the votes. So let me open it up to comments or questions from board members. Let's start if there's any questions from board members and then we'll go to comments. Are there any questions, first of all? Clarifying questions or anything for staff? Thanks.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the credential waiver, not knowing too much about this. I am just asking just a basic question on why for the superintendent of the school district, we're like breaking a legal norm to not have our superintendent have the teacher credential. I just think of questions, just like why we're doing that.
Thank you for your question. I, I just want to say that there are many districts that hire superintendents that do not come from a background in education. And so the education code provides a statute that allows school districts to appoint such people by utilizing the waiver process. It's not something that is unique to San Francisco. This is a process that is available to any district in the state that can utilize this particular statute to allow folks that are not credentialed to lead a school district.
So that was your, that was a legal answer, which was expertly given by our general counsel. I want to give you my answer as an educator with 20 years of experience in this district. So I started my teaching career at Balboa High School in 1996, as I've shared with folks, and spent 20 years as a teacher and principal. And if you had asked me five, 10 years ago, should we appoint a non-educator to lead this district? I would have absolutely agreed with all the folks that said no. But what I've seen over the last couple of decades in San Francisco Unified is how actually our fiscal and operational dysfunction has made it almost impossible to achieve our academic goals. And one of the reasons I'm so excited that Maria Sue has agreed to be considered for this position is because what she brings to us is the, an experience leading a large government agency and an experience building teams and doing the kind of work of building structures and systems in an organization that I actually think is lacking within SFUSD. I think a lot of folks that come up through the education ranks, and I'll speak for myself as a principal and as someone with lots of friends in education, we don't get the training as educators in sort of leadership and management that we ought to often. And so I think, to me, it's really exciting that we're bringing someone in from the outside who has that level of expertise to address systems that I think we all agree are not working. I'm also really excited that Carling Aguilar Fort, who's a veteran educator, special ed teacher, principal from SFUSD for many years, has agreed to serve as deputy superintendent. And so the way that I'm thinking about it at least is that this is going to be an incredible team where we bring in somebody who has the outside perspective and the, the expertise in running a, effectively running a large bureaucracy with someone who has the deep educational expertise. And they're going to work really closely together, hand in hand, to help run the district. So I don't know if other colleagues have thoughts on this topic, this question? Because I think it's a, I think it's a really good question. It's one that many people have. So that's just my opinion as someone who has probably changed my mind on this topic over the past five years. But Commissioner Fisher?
I think one of the intricacies that's very unique to us here in San Francisco also is that we are a county office of education as well as a school district. And in, there are only three other, two or three other occurrences of that in the state. And those school districts that are a county office and a school district are much, much smaller than we are. Teeny, tiny, small and sparse, they're called. And so generally, a county office of education provides a lot of technical assistance, a lot of oversight, budget support, special education support, charter school support, mental health, technology, you know, county schools. And for us, instead of having oversight and, and a district, I'm, the visual I'm using is one hand above the other for those who are not seeing what I'm saying. We are enmeshed and so now I'm combining my hands together. We are, we don't have that same level of oversight. We have lost that over the years and that is very much to our detriment and part of our big problems, especially with special education right now. So while we have a strong educational leader in Dr. Aguilar Fort, we really have so much work to do to tease apart our technical requirements as a county office and our education. our technical requirements as a county office and our educational requirements as a district. And so it's, it's really exciting to me to have both of those roles and hopefully redesign and rebuild both of those functions.
Other comments on this topic or other questions?
I have a clarifying question. I've heard a lot from the community about fears about the operational enmeshment now between the city and the school district. Can someone clarify what is going to happen as the contract is written with Dr. Sue and her city employment versus her district employment? Can we, can we state that a little bit more clearly for the community to hopefully build some confidence in what will happen there?
At the risk of sounding like a lawyer, the, the way the agreement between the city and the district is structured, Ms. Sue will be taking leave from her employment in the, Dr. Sue will be taking leave from her employment in the city. She will be working, she'll be loaned by the city to San Francisco Unified, and she will be working for San Francisco Unified. The contract clearly states that all the direction, all the work that she will be doing will be at the direction of this body, the Board of Education for San Francisco Unified School District. She will not be taking any direction from city government because she is going to be on leave. The district is going to be paying for the service, and the direction of the board is what she is going to execute in her capacity as the superintendent of education in San Francisco.
Can we also clarify how long? I mean, as, as we've heard from the community, there's a... We're electing a new mayor, potentially the same mayor, potentially a new mayor in a couple weeks here. How, how long could this contract run? If it doesn't work out, who gets to decide? Can you help us understand that a little bit more, too, please?
Really good question. The contract as written runs through June 30th, 2026. So it's from October 22nd, if the board were to approve the contract, through June 30th, 2026. Both parties have the ability to give notice to each other and walk away from the contract if this is not working out. We also, as part of the negotiations, the city government was aware that there might be a new mayor. For the district, we have potentially a new board that is going to be seated. And so both sides made sure that there was a mechanism by which the lever could be pulled with notice to each side without cause to be able to walk away from this agreement. So it doesn't have to last through June 30th, 2026. If things are not working out, if, if something extreme were to happen with both, both parties or one party decides don't want to do this, either side can pull out of the agreement.
And one last question, then I'll stop. I don't mean to cross-examine you here. We did hear a lot from the public tonight about, about contract buyouts. We heard figures being raised by the public of over half a million dollars. Is that something that we could have to assume? I mean, I have, I'm excited to be voting for this, so I don't want to send it, I just... Would we potentially be on the hook for that here, or because of the?
So if the question is, if the city and, if the district were to decide that this arrangement with the city is not working out, is there a buyout provision in this contract with the city? The answer is no. This is a mutual agreement whereby the city is loaning us experts who can fix our systems, and for us, it is utilization of public monies to pay for the service. There is no buyout because we do not have an employment agreement with Dr. Sue.
Other questions or comments from board members? Yeah, now I think we can go on to, and any, so let's open it more broadly to comments on any of the items. Did you want to go, Commissioner Bogus? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really want to ask each other questions, so it's like an interesting, like, ship. So I, I think I'm curious if you could, could share, I guess, from board leadership's perspective or your perspective, President Alexander, just kind of like the timing around it and kind of the urgency of kind of moving forward with the timeframe that was kind of put forward, and I think, kind of the thinking around it for the new superintendent.
You mean the timing of?
Of moving forward with like the process for Dr. Sue to kind of become superintendent versus kind of having more of like a community process or a dialogue process?
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
Engage like community around the conversation.
Yeah, well, in my view, we are in a crisis situation, and so I think it, it requires swift action. But as, as General Counsel Brown just, just noted, it doesn't lock the board into anything, right? So I think what's, what's beautiful about this arrangement is that we are able to move quickly, but yet the board at any point can decide to initiate a search. And so I think it's, there's a lot of flexibility in it, but it also provides much-needed stability. As we've also heard from members of the community, you know, the, the chaos needs to stop. We, we, we really need stability in our district. And I frankly am excited about this. I think that, you know, Maria has a, has a long track record of stable, really competent leadership, and I'm grateful that she's willing to do this. I'm grateful that the mayor is willing to give up one of her best employees to be able to do this. I understand people are making, sort of, thinking there's something political going on. To me, this is about people coming together beyond politics, across politics, to do what's best for our kids. And people can believe that or not, but that's my experience, again, as a twenty-year veteran educator of SFUSD, someone who's on this school board, not running for other political office, but here because I care about these kids. I've just been really impressed with what the, what this, what's happening here, and so I'm just really grateful for, for Maria's willingness to do it and the city's willingness to step up and partner with us in it. But again, I, I think the, the nice thing about this MOU, frankly, is that it, it doesn't lock us into anything. Go ahead, thanks.
Yeah, on this topic, though, I think, I agree with you that I think the chaos does need to stop, does need to stop. But this does feel, I think, on the district's behalf, a bit chaotic with this being such a swift action without much community input. And you mentioned how like the board's not locked into anything, and then that could any sort of like search or anything like that, but then that does feel like more chaos to then have a big switcheroo and be like, we're investigating this because this is something we're disagreeing with. That feels like more chaos. That does not need to be here in the district. So I think taking a little bit more time, especially like a student perspective, like to get to know the people, because like I'm actively researching some of these people right now because I have no clue who's gonna be in charge of my education in a couple days, because I am not fully like in, I think the process is going a bit quick, at least for me.
I think Vice President Weisman Ward wanted to respond.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's important for, I, I really appreciate all of your questions, and I think it's really important to distinguish between sort of what community input looks like in a superintendent search. So superintendent searches are highly confidential, so at no point would there be, I mean, when, if we were doing a, a sort of a nationwide search, and we are sort of, when we're reviewing resumes and applications, are super bound to not sit, not naming a name to anyone outside of our board members. So it's not an event that would say, oh, we have these five names, please give us input. So that would never be the type of input. What potentially would be the input is, is what the former board before us did. Extensive, maybe Commissioner Lam can speak on this, got a lot of input on the values and type of leader that we wanted. And I would like to think that when board leadership was thinking about, you know, what would a steady hand look like in this moment, we were thinking about that input that came about, what, was it three, three and a half years ago? It was very extensive community engagement on the types of values that we hoped we would have in a leader.
Do you want to speak to that, Commissioner Lam, since you were board president at that time and led that effort?
Yes, so our background that we, when Dr. Matthews announced his retirement, the Board of Education launched into an extensive search. And it took essentially nearly a year. And I'll just name that we were also navigating at that time, still in COVID, in the midst of a historical recall. And it was chaotic. And frankly, I've been on the board for six years. My term ends in December. I'm in my sixteenth year as a SFUSD parent. And I can, will share with you that it has been trying times for this district. It's been trying for students, families, and our staff. And we did go through an extensive process, and the report was amazing. We held over sixty-eight conversations with our advisory committees, with our staff, with the community. And our consultants commented that it's been one of the most extensive, community-driven superintendent searches that their company has been involved with. Then we launched into, at that time, once the student governance, student outcomes governance framework work that was led by this board or the, the previous board also launched into, with the Council of Great City Schools, extensive community engagement. We ended up gathering eight thousand pieces of community evidence in order to have the five-year goals that the board ultimately adopted for our student outcomes. I raise this because it is absolutely critical that San Francisco engages deeply with its community. And when it doesn't, we see what is the effect and its negative impacts. And so I just, as one board member tonight who's served on this board for six years, that is a parent, and I am so proud to be a San Francisco Unified parent. My children have benefited from amazing public education because of San Francisco. And each and every day that I get up, and I can only just use I statements of my own, it's really important that I will share with you, each and every member of the community that's listening, that's here in this room, that this decision that this body is going to take as your governing board is about rebuilding trust, about stability. And while it is very challenging and difficult times, not only where we've been, where we are today, and where we're going to be in the future, that we need to provide assertive leadership. And I will name for you, as board president, former or past president, that was navigating through the debacle and the payroll debacle, that the challenges are deep. And it is going to require all of us to come together. And I recognize there is a lot of fear, there's a lot of hurt, and at the same time, we will not recover. We will not recover to providing the best public education, the best public schools that our students deserve unless we come together to coming to solve for these problems and putting our children first and foremost. And while we have been fighting and advocating for equity and justice, our student outcomes and our educational learning and those experiences for our children have not been realized. And if anything, they have actually gone further from the core of what we believe in as a district and as a city, and that we must deliver on. So I stand before you today as your past president, as someone who shows up each and every day, and that every part of me is going to leave it all on the field, so to speak, by the end of my tenure. And with decades of serving in the community of my professional career, and I would not be here today if it had not been for community. And I am thrilled and excited to entrust my vote and confidence in Dr. Maria Sue as superintendent and with Dr. Aguilar Ford to embody and bring a team who's going to be reaching into as well as building in community with our school communities and our leaders and our parents and community at large. And I just returned from a national convening of our colleagues of the largest urban school districts in the country, and it was really important to be in community with one another, to share about both the challenges, but also the hopes and the dreams that the young people and our students are counting on us, that our staff are counting on us. And so I also just want to bring them into the room that we're not doing this alone. We're not doing this alone as one unified school district here in San Francisco. We are going to be doing it in partnership with our city. And then we frankly are very fortunate to have the resources that we do and how we're gonna make that even greater impact in working with our city and our state. That I know that so many of our colleagues just across the bay or even across the country, in Ohio, in Georgia, that look at us around the amount of resources that we have. So I am hopeful, and I am gonna be calling to, even as a civilian after my service here, formerly on the board, that this work is gonna be, is absolutely so critical and important and essential that I'm, again, tonight, thank you to President Alexander, to Vice President Weisman Ward. You all have also been that steady leadership in a very trying time. And I know what it's like to sit in the seats and being able to just bring this body together is a real testament to the focus that we have and a commitment that we have to our community as the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lam. Are there, let's turn to the commissioners that haven't yet spoken. I don't know if either of you would like to... Commissioner Kim, yeah? Let's go, Commissioner. Do either of you want to say anything else? So let's go, Commissioner Bogus, then Vice President Weisman Ward.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think, I think I'm concerned with, with the items we have for today to vote on. I think just to, to kind of lift up that I wish we were taking a slower process and engaging in a more deliberate process around dialogue. I felt that way when we hired our last superintendent. We made a choice not to have a more public process to prioritize the candidates that we wanted, right? Because people don't want to, let people know they want to leave their job when they're looking for new jobs. And so I think we have to decide what our priority is, and I think how we want to go about this. And I think for me, being able to go slow and really assess what is wrong with the relationship between the board and the superintendent's office and the position as a whole, how do we keep ending up in a place where we don't reach the goals that we want to see? And so I really would love to see us spend a little bit more time investigating those things and really crafting a solution for our unique district that we aren't really set up to do right now. And I think that helps kind of lead to some of the issues that we're struggling to, to overcome. And so, I mean, I think for me, you know, just really trying to figure out how do we center dialogue with the community, even if we do the same thing, but just to be able to be in community, let people understand the reasoning for our decisions. I'm glad that we had opportunity to do that some today during this conversation, really kind of express where the board is coming from. Because a lot of times people don't get that, and they just feel the impact of the decisions. And so I would just, you know, encourage my fellow commissioners to, to think about how we can go slow in this process and create space for more dialogue and voice from folks in our community who are going to be impacted.
Thank you. And I, I want to say, Commissioner Bogus, I don't disagree at all in terms of the need to engage. And I think we can, we can hold multiple things at once. We need to have a leadership team in place to be able to move forward with some very, very, very urgent and important things that are impacting our school sites, our kids, our educators. And I think we know now from hearing from general counsel and from reading the contract that there are options as well in terms of additional engagement should we choose that route. So I think we can hold both. But what I don't think is an option is to have sort of a leadership vacuum. We, we are not in a position to have a leadership vacuum at this point. And I will say that I am really, really thrilled about the idea of a dynamic duo team. I think that understanding, and this goes to Commissioner Fisher's point, that we are a, a, a district and a county in one, and that there has been a real void and a real lack, at least from, from the very, very, very top, being able to hold the expertise in both the operational systems and also the educational systems. And to know that we will have two experts working side by side, hand in hand, to make sure that we can meet our goals. Not only our actual goals, our VVGGS, but also our operational and systems goals so that our educators are getting paid, so that we have staff in the classrooms, so that our, that our educators have places where they can go and get their jobs done and where our kids can be educated by, by competent, happy, supported folks. So I am excited that we are gonna have two
So I am excited that we are going to have two really, really brilliant, really kind, really thoughtful leaders to help us through this next continued hard times.
I was making notes earlier, and one of the things that I was thinking about was growth mindset. We expect growth mindset out of our students, and hopefully we as the adults here in leadership can model that as well. And I think one of the areas where I see a huge amount of need for growth, us as a leadership and the district as a leadership team, is transparency with the community in what's going on. And so if I do, I am, I'm excited exactly for what you said, Vice President Weissman Ward, about the one-two punch and the strengths that both bring. I just, my one ask is that to you, Dr. Aguilera Ford, and to Dr. Sue when she joins us, is for transparency in the work you're doing in the infrastructure changes that need to happen, the, we still have a lot of accounting to do for things that have happened in special education. We have a lot of, I mean, a lot of accounting for the budgeting process to make things more student-centered. And just so many hard things to do while trying to alleviate our huge budget deficit and structural deficit over the next couple of years with the help of our friends at FICMAT. So that is one, my one ask, I think, on behalf of, to, someone asked me earlier to make sure that I reflect the values of the community tonight. And so to me, that means acting with integrity and doing it transparently. So I hope that I can lead with that alongside our new leadership team.
All right, any last comments? Maybe I'll just say, just a word of appreciation for the skepticism from Commissioner Bogus, from members of the public. I think, I think that skepticism is appropriate and helpful, and I think it goes in line with Commissioner Fisher's comments about the need for transparency. And I think the other thing I would say is meaningful community engagement is critically important. That's one of, that's our first guardrail, in fact, that as we represent the values of the community. And frankly, we're going to be holding our superintendent accountable to that, starting on day one. And so I think the, the, you know, the, what matters, the rubber meets the road in actions, right? We can sit up here and say all we want, and each of us is going to make our decisions tonight and put our reputations on the line. I'm going to put, like I said, my reputation as an educator on the line, saying I support Maria Sue as our superintendent, because I believe it's the right thing to do based on my experience and based on my knowledge of her. And as soon as she's appointed superintendent, our job collectively is to hold her accountable as we hold her and the team accountable to produce the results. And so I think that's what you're going to see from us, that's what you ought to see from us, and that should be the community's expectation. So, you know, I think that, again, that is, that's what accountability looks like. I think it's appropriate. And each of us, as an elected official, has to make those tough decisions and, and decide where our integrity lies. So for me, I feel like the, the level of chaos that we've been experiencing is unacceptable. I think we need a level of stability right now, and I think Maria Sue is the leader who's going to provide it. She, again, has a wealth of experience as running a large government agency. She's a collaborative leader. She's someone that has the systems and operational expertise that we lack in SFUSD. And we have phenomenal educators like Dr. Aguilera Ford, who are also going to lead our educational side, and we're really, really grateful also to you for your service. I'd also appreciate it if members of the audience could not speak while board members are speaking, because it becomes difficult for others to follow the meeting. So just please, if you need to have a conversation, go outside and do it, just again, to respect the process. But, so again, the team together, I think, is going to be really solid, and we're just really grateful to both of you for stepping up. So with that, let's proceed with our votes, starting with item, item one, the agreement between City and County of San Francisco and the San Francisco Unified School District for Superintendent Services.
Thank you. On item E1, Student Delegate Montgomery?
No.
Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Passes with six eyes.
Great. Thank you. Item two, E2, Approval of Resolution Appointing Maria Sue as the Superintendent of San Francisco Unified School District.
Thank you. On item E2, Student Delegate Montgomery?
No.
Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President, excuse me, Alexander?
Yes.
Six eyes, it passes.
Thank you. Item E3, The Approval of Resolution for the Credential Waiver pursuant to Education Code Section 35029.
Thank you. Student Delegate Montgomery?
No.
Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Six eyes, it passes.
All right, and so I would like to, before we do the next vote, I'd like to invite our new superintendent, would you want to invite her to come up? Superintendent Sue, thank you for joining us. Thank you. All right, so let's vote on item E4, The Approval of the Contract of District Executive Deputy Superintendent. And you need to do the readout for them.
Present to the Brown Act, we have to orally report what the monetary value of the contract is equivalent to. So the board will be considering the approval of contract for deputy superintendent for Dr. Carling Aguilera Ford. The term of the agreement is through June 30th, 2026, and the proposed salary under this agreement is $320,000 per annum.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thank you. On E4, Student Delegate Montgomery?
No.
Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Passes with six eyes.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our new superintendent and deputy superintendent. We look forward to working together to bring stability to our school districts, to working as a team and as a governance team for all of us, to really get SFUSD back on the right track. And just super grateful for both of you, for your willingness to serve and feeling very hopeful in this moment. So, thank you, thank you. All right, with that, this meeting, at 8:10, this meeting is adjourned.